And our first item is to go into closed meeting and the motion will read, be it resolved, the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.2-3711, number three, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Number one, acquisition of real estate for potential county office space. Next, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. Number one, New River Valley Regional Water Authority. And number two, Metropolitan Planning Organization known as MPO. Do I have such a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Ms. Boone?
Stand.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fritzkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstain. Okay, that's over here. Here. Okay. 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 Here.
To call the meeting back to order at this time and I need a motion that's going to get us out of closed meeting.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
And roll call, please.
Mr. Kits.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski.
Aye.
Mr. Motz.
Aye.
Mr. Graski.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
I'm staying.
Chair Biggs.
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstain.
Okay, and then our next order will be to certify the closed meeting and the motion will read, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and where as section 2.2, 3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do I have such a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
And roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski.
Aye.
Mr. Motz.
Aye.
Mr. Graski.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Staying.
Mr. Kits.
Aye.
Chair Biggs.
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstain.
Okay, and at this time we're going to have our moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance led by our county administrator, Ms. Hill.
As we stand as you're able to have a moment of silence, I'd ask that you remember the people that were impacted by Hurricane Helene and also the first responders that helped us through that situation. I know a lot of you are here this evening and the PSA employees who really spent a lot of time and effort with that as well. Let us pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Want to welcome everyone to our meeting tonight and we're going to start off with presentations, awards, and recognitions. And first up, which is real exciting because we're all excited for these folks to be here, Fire and Rescue Service Awards. So I'll turn it back over to whoever I'm turning it over to.
Michael Geary and our chief and chair of the Fire and Rescue Commission, Steve Sheeler, are here this evening to start this for us, along with a lot of people that we get to recognize.
Thank you, ma'am.
Welcome.
Good evening, Board members. Thank you all for having us up here tonight. Annually, we recognize all of our volunteers that have gone above and beyond the call of duty and service to our county and to the citizens that live and reside here. And tonight, we're here to recognize those that have served 20 years or more of their lives to this community. So part of it is obviously recognizing the volunteers that have actually served and committed that time, but also taking the time to recognize the families that have been right there with them through the years, the long nights, the weekends, the holidays, that these men and women have had to go out to serve these communities. So we appreciate all of our volunteers and what they do for our community and the families that stand by their side to support them. So I'm joined here tonight by Chief Sheeler, the chair of the Fire and Rescue Commission, to present the awards. And as we go throughout this, we'll have the respective chief of each agency come up to help present. So we'll get started with the Reiner Volunteer Fire Department. I'll ask Chief Duncan to join us. So our first award from the Reiner Volunteer Fire Department is none other than Supervisor Todd King.
He's on his way.
I hope he has his key. Yeah, there he is.
Next, from the Reiner Volunteer Fire Department, we have Rodney Martin with 20 years of service. From the Reiner Volunteer Fire Department, Tom Miller with 20 years of service. Next, from Reiner Volunteer Fire Department, Randall Estes with 35 years of service. Our last recipient from the Reiner Volunteer Fire Department is Mike Moles with 40 years of service. Next, I'll ask Chief Drew Smith to come up and join us for Blacksburg Volunteer Fire Department. Our first recipient from Blacksburg Fire is Chris Lucas with 30 years of service. Not here with us tonight is John Cromer with 40 years of service and Keith Boltie with 50 years of service. Next, from Blacksburg Fire, we have Bruce Shepard with 55 years of service. Lastly, from Blacksburg Fire is Benny Simmers with 55 years of service. Receiving an award tonight from the Blacksburg Volunteer Rescue Squad is Chief Dave English with 20 years of service, who will call up to also present awards with us. From Blacksburg Volunteer Rescue Squad, Allison LePere with 20 years of service. Next is Robert Hines with 20 years of service. Mark Jackson with 20 years of service. Sidney Rock with 20 years of service. Dr. Brian Eke with 21 years of service. Next, from Blacksburg Rescue is Toya Early with 25 years of service. Next, from Blacksburg Rescue is Rob Speeden with 30 years of service. Next, from Blacksburg Rescue is John O'Shea with 30 years of service. Next, from Blacksburg Rescue is David Lander with 35 years of service. And last, from Blacksburg Rescue is Louisa Gaye with 46 years of service. Next, we'll be recognizing the Elliston Volunteer Fire Department. Unfortunately, their chief was unable to join us tonight. First, from Elliston is Darryl Wells with 40 years of service. Next, from Elliston Fire is Billy Cook with 37 years of service. Our next two volunteers from Elliston were unable to join us tonight, but Bill Jennings with 33 years of service and Baron Gibson with 44 years of service. Next, we'll call up Chief Danny Yopp from the Christiansburg Volunteer Fire Department to receive his 50-year award and to help us present awards to their other two members. Next, from Christiansburg Fire, we have John Linkus with 20 years of service. And our last recipient tonight from the Christiansburg Volunteer Fire Department is Mike Moore with 40 years of service. Board members, thank you very much for giving us the time here tonight. Thank you. I can't speak for everybody here in the room tonight, but I can say of the men and women that are here tonight, you won't see more dedicated people, the ones that show up no matter what time of day, no matter what time of night, to help when they've got their neighbors in need. And it's always nice to be able to recognize them, but here tonight's not enough to recognize the amount that they've given to our community. So just want to say thank you to all of them again.
And on behalf of the board members up here, we want to thank them also and thank you for everything you do day in and day out for our citizens. Thank you. Okay, everybody has a chance to sort of move. Okay, as folks are moving on out, we'll go ahead and we'll look at our next presenter tonight, and that would be David Clark with VDOT. So come on up, David, and we'll give folks a chance to walk out and then you can start.
I can't see him. Let me know, yeah. I don't expect a standing ovation.
Yeah.
No pressure.
You can talk about exciting things like 81 when they all have to go out for wrecks.
Yes. Actually, we work very closely with a lot of us guys. It is great. They all do a great job. When there's a wreck out there, we turn it over to them. We just try to control traffic.
Yeah, that is a really good turnout. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, not a lot, really. We're doing kind of our normal stuff. Most of the time, we did have a little storm that came through that we had to deal with. We didn't get it as bad as a lot, so we're thankful for that. There were some nervous times as the new river kept rising and probably most of the damage or potential was in Giles County, you know, where the river rose right through the county, but down at the area underneath the 81 Bridge and through Radford and through Pepper's Ferry. It was, I've never seen it quite as high on that Pepper's Ferry Bridge as I saw it that morning, that Saturday morning. Same thing in Giles. Saw it up on the tops of the pier caps on some of those ridges in Pembroke, and it was something I'd never seen before. And then when it went down, we had a lot to clean up. And so, you know, we've done with most of that. And besides that, we are getting some mowing and machining of some gravel roads done, done some brush cutting. We did cut some trees on Nellie's Cave Road, most towards the end, the Woodland Hills end. And then the other big project we're working on and are getting close to where we might put some hard surface on is the secondary construction road you have in your plan, the Royal Rustic Road of Taylor Hollow off of Luster's Gate Road. And we've done a lot of the grading work on that, getting that touched up, getting a lot of good comments from the residents as they drive by, and getting some insights from them. We may end up putting some guard rail in some places after we cleared all that out, it becomes apparent how steep some of those slopes are. So we may be adding some of that and have met some of the citizens out there to get some input on the location of some of that guard rail. And then we're getting ready for winter. So we're prepping all of our equipment. We run through what we call a dry run every year where we get the equipment together as if there's a storm coming, the plows and the spreaders and all of our hired equipment. And we have representatives from our equipment shop in Salem come around and grade everything. And so it's a real test of the equipment without going out and actually dealing with that stuff. So we've got everything ready to roll. And really, that's all I have right now. Other than that, you know, the dealing with the storms and the brush and getting Taylor Hollow built, that's what we've been working on the last month.
Well, I know everyone really appreciates that because, I mean, it was everywhere. So thank you for that. All right, well, let's see if anyone has any questions. And let's start with Supervisor Graski. Anything that you have tonight?
Yeah, well, thank you for being here this evening, Mr. Clark, and thanks for all the work that your folks are doing to clean up. And I got some questions, and this was actually prior to the storm. And so I don't know if any of this, is it, oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah.
So I don't know if any of this maybe changes with damage from the storm, but I had questions around Big Falls Road, Norris Run Road, and Quartz Lane.
I know Quartz, but Big Falls, what was the second?
Norris Run.
Norris Run, yeah.
And so if there was any schedule to repave?
We'll be looking at a lot of stuff. If it was torn up during the floods, and I know Big Falls was, yes, it will all be put back.
Okay, okay. And yeah, and I guess the question just was, like, were any of the others on a predetermined schedule?
No.
For maintenance? Okay.
Nothing for those.
Okay, well, yeah, so that's just, that's a request that I had received. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Supervisor Damott.
I think Angie passed.
We got it.
Yes, I think Angie passed along her request, too.
We got it this afternoon.
Yeah. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Thank you very much for being here tonight and for all of the work that you've been majorly doing.
Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor King.
Do appreciate all the hard work y'all did out there, because I know there's trees and water everywhere.
Oh, yeah.
And I do appreciate on Piney Woods and Childers, the speed limits you put up.
Good, good deal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Supervisor Kits.
So I'm going to harp on my two big things. I'm going to go with the flashing light coming up the road, coming up towards.
We're working on that one, unfortunately, yeah.
Not letting that one go.
No, don't, don't. You're going to remind me every time, or I will.
So, and the other one that I keep harping on is the Prices Fork Pepper's Ferry intersection because our county administrator ran into that traffic and it's out of nowhere. And it's, today again, it was backed up all the way to Onyx for no reason, all the way from Prices Fork all the way up the hill to Onyx where it starts to get dangerous where you're at the crest of the hill.
They said they were going to go out and look at it at those rush hours. And I want to make sure. So what time of day? I want to just double check.
About five.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah, and it's, there's no reason. It's backed up probably 40, 50 cars. I mean, it's way back. So, and it goes both ways. So I'm like a dog with a bone. I'm not letting these go. I'm just going to.
Yeah, no, please do.
So, and the last thing, and I know you've had a chance to go up through there, but once they finish paving Pepper's Ferry from the Christiansburg line out, the group that did the lines seems a little of colored outside the lines, how to speak. Just kind of, to me, from what I've normally seen, it looks a little sloppy on the way up the hill as you go through where they cut it. as you go through, where they cut it out to, in order to put up the reflectors and everything else. And it just seems like, and I know this is bad, I'm getting a couple of looks, but the way the road's built all the way from there, all the way out, it looks sloppy.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I haven't looked at it. We were looking at it at one time because of the different, the passing zones changed slightly, but I'll check on the other issues, too.
Yeah, it's changed, it's adjusted away from where they cut the road to put the reflectors in, and the lines are off from that, but they're also like, it's like they did half a line, and then they did another half a line to try to make up. It's one of those ones where if I tried to make a cake and I wanted to make the icing better, I'd keep smearing more and more and more, trying to fix it and just dig a deeper hole. So it looks like they tried to fix it, but it looks like I tried to fix it.
Yeah.
So, just to put that out there, but yeah, that's the big three.
Okay.
So, thank you, and thank you for being here.
Sure.
And Supervisor Bone?
Great job with the Nellie's Cave-Woodland Hills intersection. I like how you didn't necessarily take down as many trees as you could, but it was clear that a fair amount were, as well as the brush in amongst the trees, so that people can see safely around both corners coming to the tee at Woodland Hills, so...
I think that'll help in wintertime, too, with some sunshine.
For sure, for sure. There's actually, no, I have to talk to the town. At the top of Nellie's Cave, there's a vine hanging in the middle of the road that I know any truck is gonna hit.
And we could've gone a bit further if we'd had the money, it's an expensive thing, so we did what we could, yeah.
Yeah, it's so far away, it's at the top, like, right where it enters the town, so...
Yeah.
And then Taylor Hollow Road, I had a chance to go down there today. Looks great, the last time I saw it was maybe five, six weeks ago. I'm really surprised about how wide that road is, right at the top, at the top. And then, and I'm also really surprised at how much of the, you actually go up to go down.
It does.
That not more was cleared, topped off there, but... But got great compliments today from one of the residents. That first going from Luster's Gate into Taylor Hollow, that first hairpin turn around right without any trees or anything there was really surprising. But it was great to get the compliment from the resident that despite the two hurricanes that came through, the drainage there was great, so incredible.
Yeah, we noticed that, and as well as the low-water structure at the end.
Yeah.
I think held up pretty well.
Did it. So I'm curious, you're gonna pave from Luster's Gate to the low-water bridge?
Not to the low-water bridge, just to that first bridge, yes.
Just that first section, okay.
The second section is also planned.
Right.
But we're trying, we're trying to spend some money quickly, is what we're doing, because that money would go away and not be available, so we jumped on that, and then we'll work on the next section.
Perfect, thank you again.
Okay, and Vice Chair Fidjikowski?
I'll start out by saying I was disheartened when I found out that the grant money for railroad-grade crossings didn't apply to Den Hill Road, but that is something that we really, as the county grows, we, something really needs to be done, and I don't even know where to begin on that one. But I know dealing with the railroad is a big enough issue, but it's just to have that in that area where there's gonna be more and more traffic, and I never really thought about it, but fire trucks can't get through it, I don't even think the ambulance can get through it, which, that is, that's a safety issue. So if you have any suggestions that maybe I could follow up on, that we might be able to get somebody to at least consider it and consider some options, because, you know, as the land lays in there, it's all crazy anyways with the downgrade into...
I can get our traffic engineering, they deal with 12 counties, and they, you know, look at things throughout the state, and they may have an example somewhere else where somebody has done some work for something like that. I'll see what they, what their thoughts are on it.
And I'm sure it won't be a cheap fix, that's for sure, but we need to be at least marching towards finding a solution for that. But other than that, I listened to all the trees falling on that Saturday, and your crews did an outstanding job. I mean, they ran from one to another. I even got to give, I think there was a few sheriff deputies that threw a chainsaw in their trunk of their car, too, and tried to help out, but you're right, we were very lucky not to... Allegheny didn't flood where it normally does, some spots in Ironto did. But kudos to all your employees, because they just did an outstanding job.
Thank you, yep, I'll pass that along.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else from board members? Okay, I just want to thank you for being here and for all the work you did. And I just have one follow-up question, sort of related to what Supervisor Kits brought up, and I brought this up with you before. Can you sort of help us to remember what the timeline is for there to possibly be a right turn lane from Prices Fork to 114? I know that we've been talking about this for a long time.
That project is in design, I don't know, it's gonna be probably a year or two. I'll get the exact date, because it is, it's on a track for design right-of-way. We've already started doing some of the preliminary engineering. If you remember, a few months ago, we had rigs out there drilling holes and doing the preliminary geological work for that. So that is a project, it's basically underway, the design is underway.
Yeah, because I think that would be helpful, but some people are going ahead and making their own right turn.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, so I just, it's probably not safe.
I'll get the exact current dates on that advertisement for that project, let you know.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Appreciate that. All right, so next, under Presentations, we're going to have Mr. Bill Flattery, or I should say Dr. Flattery, Vice President of Carillion Clinic Western Region, and he's gonna make a presentation on Carillion's proposed kidney transplant service.
Thank you all for having me, it's nice to see you all. It was fun to sit through the presentation from our volunteers. A level of volunteerism is impressive, it's really nice. It's what makes Montgomery County special, neighbors taking care of neighbors. And in a certain sense, that's what I'm here to talk with you about tonight. Carillion Clinic is applying to the Commonwealth of Virginia for a kidney transplant program. We don't have one locally, and we need one. According to the CDC, one in seven Americans is living with chronic kidney disease, and it's the 10th leading cause of death in the United States, kidney disease. And right now, there are 2,300 people in the Commonwealth of Virginia on a waiting list for a kidney transplant. Locally, we have many, many, many patients that need the service that can't afford to drive at least two hours away to the closest transplant center. So because the best healthcare is local healthcare, Carillion is applying to the Commonwealth for that certificate of public need. In order to achieve that, we need to demonstrate public support, and I'm here to ask for that public support from you all in the form of a resolution. May I answer any questions about our kidney transplant program?
Okay, let's see if we have any. Supervisor Bone, do you have any questions about it? How about Supervisor Kits? And Supervisor King? Supervisor Damas?
I don't have any questions, but I appreciate you being here, and I appreciate your work to expand some of the medical options in our community. So you have my support. I think there may have been something on the computer for us to see?
It's a fact list.
Okay.
Oh, she's gonna...
Jen can help you get that pulled up.
Supervisor Grafsky?
Good evening. I was just curious, which, I presume this would be based out of Roanoke?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We'll do the operations in Roanoke, at Roanoke Memorial, and we'll see the patients locally. Blue Ridge Nephrology is the biggest nephrology group locally. They rent space at our Blacksburg Family Medicine office. They see patients on our hospital campus, and they intend to see all of those patients locally through the operations in Roanoke. The transplant surgeons will come down and see patients locally so that when the patient's close to needing the transplant operation, they don't even have to drive to Roanoke Memorial until they have the operation. And what's interesting is I talked with one of the nephrologists this morning, and he has three patients that he cares for in Blacksburg that are waiting for our Carillion Clinic transplant program before they put themselves on the waiting list, because they couldn't avail themselves to the services otherwise.
Okay, fantastic, thank you. And I guess it is, like, accessibility of a program the bigger hindrance to getting people in, or availability of transplants, or is it kind of multi...?
Yeah, it's multifactorial. There's 2,300 people on the waiting list in the Commonwealth, and there's just not that much availability. So we try to keep them as well as possible through dialysis. When they're end stage, they're really, really sick.
Right.
And it's hard for them to travel for the service. That's why we need the service locally.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, and Vice Chair Fidjikowski?
Well, I think it's a, I think it's a great idea, and I certainly think that Carillion is big enough now to handle something like that, so I'm definitely behind it. That's, it's gonna save lives, and you can't get any better than that, so...
Yeah, what's that?
Thank you, thank you for bringing to our attention.
And I shared this with Bill earlier. I think it's really a critical area, because I did lose an aunt at age 29 to kidney disease, and that was back in the day where there was a waiting list to get on dialysis at UVA, and she didn't make it because the waiting list was so long. So to think what we've gone from in the 1960s to where we are now, to be able to provide that and have it to be local, I think would be a great service. So I think what you're looking for is, if the board is in consensus for us to bring a resolution forward to pass for you.
Yes, please.
Do I have consensus on that? Everybody's okay? All right, we'll do that, wanna do it at our next meeting, Ms. Hill?
Yes, we'll get that on for the next meeting.
Okay.
All right, thank you all, I appreciate your time, and thank you for your service to our community. You're part of what makes this a special place as well. Have a good night, thank you.
Thank you.
How, excuse me a minute. How soon do you need that resolution?
Next month will be fine. We're making the application to the state, we're accumulating our evidence of community support. If it's sooner, fine, if it's next month, that will work as well.
Okay.
And thank you for asking that.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Okay, we can probably do it at our October 28th meeting, I think that would work, okay. All right.
Thank you all.
So that concludes our area of presentations, awards, and recognition. So now we're on to public hearings, and our first one is special use permit for James Crenshaw short-term tourist rental. Bree, you want to lead us through it?
I will be glad to.
Okay.
As soon as we get it up here. So as you stated, this is a request for a special use permit to allow a short-term tourist rental in the residential R2 zoning district. Here's the vicinity map, it's located right outside the town of Blacksburg on a road called Wright's Way, which is off of Harding, you can see that here. These are the aerial photos of the property. Wright's Way is a private road, and that's designated by the red line here. And this is your zoning, it is completely surrounded by other residential R2-zoned properties. So the applicant is proposing to use the short-term tourist rental not more than four consecutive days or 20 days a month. That's partially because of some Virginia Department of Health requirements for the private septic on property. Our zoning district R2 does require a special use permit, as the owner does not also occupy the residence. We do have several supplemental regulations for short-term tourist rentals. We just wanted to remind you of what those are. These are written into the ordinance, so anytime you approve one of these special use permits, these regulations also have to be met. A lot of them deal with things such as parking. No signage is allowed to show that it's a short-term tourist rental. It has to meet all the requirements of the Fire Prevention Code, emergency evacuation plans. We do require that they have a local means of making a phone call, whether that be that they show they do have sufficient cellphone service, or they have a landline, because we do have some rural areas that still struggle with cellphone service. This is the existing dwelling on the property. You can see they have two existing parking spaces, but they will be creating an area for two more. This is the dwelling, it is a four-bedroom, three-bath dwelling. And then these are your views looking down Harding Road towards Blacksburg, and then also away from Blacksburg. This is Wright's Way, it does start off as a paved private drive, but then it does convert to gravel further up. And then this is looking south to the adjoining property, so this is the property owner to the south. They do share the driveway. And then this is on the site, looking at the existing vegetative buffer towards the west, and then this is the property with the view from the backyard. So as stated, Wright's Way is a private gravel road with a 30-foot right-of-way. The driveway is shared with an adjoining property owner. Traffic impacts are minimal, as it should not produce any more traffic than a standard single-family dwelling. Parking is available, it is not located in a FEMA flood hazard area. It will be served by private well and septic. The Virginia Department of Health did issue an approval stating that it could be used as a four-bedroom dwelling, as a short-term tourist rental, with limited occupancy of eight to 10 guests, no more than four consecutive days, and limited to 20 days per month. So that's basically what they have determined that the septic could handle. The lot does have natural buffers from the closest residences with a vast view of the mountains. The owner has indicated gatherings or parties will not be allowed. The dwelling will be equipped with an outdoor camera for security, and the property will be managed by Blue Ridge Escapes. They will be the main point of contact for any housekeeping, urgent repairs, lawn care, extermination services. All adjoining property owners will also be given their contact information, so if they have any complaints, they can contact the maintenance company. Dogs will be permitted on-site, but they do have to be kept on a leash and cleaned up after. This is in an area of residential transition in our comprehensive plan. That's basically meant a low-density neighborhood area of undeveloped land. It should be limited, it should have limited public sewer or water service. This actually has neither, it is served by private well and septic. These are your comprehensive plan goals, planning and land use goal, discussing residential transition and it being a residential use, cultural resources encourages tourism to the area, and then economic resources as well. The proposed use does meet regulations outlined in the supplemental regulations. It's also residential with no more impacts than a single-family dwelling. VDH has approved the use with limitations. VDOT took no exception to the request. We also notified the town of Blacksburg, given their proximity, but they did not have any concerns either. The Planning Commission held their public hearing on September 18th, and on a vote of eight to zero, they did recommend approval. No members of the public came forward to speak during that public hearing. The conditions recommended for the special use permit, occupancy shall be limited to eight occupants, no more than four consecutive days, 20 days per month. The property shall be registered with Commissioner of Revenue's Office for meals and occupancy taxes. All permits should be obtained by the Building Department, and all of those short-term supplemental regulations shall be met. Adjoining owners were notified, and the legal ads were placed in the news messenger. We have not received any comments from the public, however, you may have some here this evening. I will take any questions you have for me, and the applicant is here as well, if you should have any questions for him.
Okay, well, let's start. Supervisor Bone, do you have any questions?
I don't.
At this time? Supervisor Kits?
No questions.
Okay, Supervisor King? Supervisor Grafsky?
No questions.
And Supervisor Damas?
No questions, thank you.
And Vice Chair Fidjikowski?
No questions.
Okay, and I don't either at this time. So we're opening the public hearing, and we did not have anyone sign up for this particular public hearing, but if there's anyone that wants to come forward at this time, please do so, and you may address the board for four minutes. And we have a little box up there that when three minutes is up, the yellow light comes on, and then when four minutes is up, the red light comes on. Is there anyone that would like to come forward for this public hearing? All right, seeing no one, we'll close this public hearing, and we'll move to our next public hearing, which is a... which is a special use permit, commercial kennel for Jason and Nikki, uh, Cowan, I believe. And Bree's gonna lead us through that.
Yes. Um, this is a special use permit, as you stated, um, for a two-story commercial kennel located on Quince Road. It's in the southern portion of the county. If you look at the blow-up here, this is actually Pilot Road that runs through here. Um, this is the aerial view of the property. Quince Road is also a private road, as indicated by the red line here. And then, it is zoned agriculture A1 in the surrounding area. This hatching means this property is in an agricultural forestal district. So, the request is to allow a two-story commercial kennel with the upper floor serving as a residence, um, for the employees slash owners. Um, the applicant does request the ability to breed house and train dogs owned by themselves. Um, we do require a special use permit with several limitations for kennels. And those include that no principal or accessory use or structure shall be within 500 feet of an existing dwelling, other than the owner's dwelling, nor within 300 feet of any adjoining lot line. The proposal, as shown, does meet those limitations. The kennel is approximately 350 linear feet from the nearest property line, and 700 linear feet from the nearest adjoining dwelling. Setback distances for the kennel will be verified if this is approved during site plan approval. As you can see, this X here identifies the approximate location of the dwelling. It's central to the property. And then, this is the proposed layout. So, this is the upper floor, which would be the residential structure. It's a two-bedroom. And then, this is the kennel area with two fenced run yards. This is a look at the intersection of Quince Road and Pilot, looking towards Christiansburg and towards Floyd County. And then, this is the entrance to the property from Quince Road, and this is the subject property. Again, this is the subject property. You can see the topography here. Um, this is a driveway, and an adjoining property is right here. That's the closest adjacent dwelling, which does not appear to be currently occupied. So, traffic impacts will remain minimal. Um, VDOT did take no exception to the approval of the special use permit request, and they did not require any improvements. Um, the subject property does not have any public road frontage, so it is accessed off of a private road, Quince Road. Um, the 12-foot right-of-way on an adjoining property not owned by the Cowans. Um, the proposed dwelling will be accessed through the connection to that existing driveway. A new standalone private well and septic will be required with Virginia Department of Health approval. And the lot has, um, topography, as we stated, with the proposed kennel being sited on top of one of the higher points on the property. Currently, agricultural operations do take place on the site with livestock dogs, so they do have working farm dogs. They are part of their family. Um, the applicant does not typically allow customers to visit the property. Um, instead, they would meet them off-site, um, at a public place to transfer the dogs. The entire perimeter of the property is fenced, with some internal fenced areas as well. Um, employees who care for the dogs do reside on the property, and they can address any noise, safety, and security issues. The adjoining 81-acre property to the west is an outline AFD district, as I pointed out on the map. Um, we do have a statement that was issued by the Montgomery County Animal Care and Adoption Center that they asked that we forward on to you. Um, and that's that the Animal Care and Adoption Center works very hard to find homes for all dogs in our care, many of which are purebred dogs. We hope that any breeding facility based in our jurisdiction would take measures to ensure their animals, once purchased, would not eventually contribute to the homeless animal population. This is located in an area designated as rural in our comprehensive plan. Um, it's basically where a lot of agricultural and rural residential uses are predominant. Um, very low-density re- residential. Um, they do have some secondary ag soils, and they are generally not served by public utilities at all. These are our two comprehensive plan designations we felt applied to this request. Um, new, non-agriculturally-based industrial and commercial uses will be generally discouraged, unless it's compatible in scale and intensity with agricultural uses. So, the proposed use does comply with those use limitations and A1 regulations. It remains primarily residential, with the accessory use being agricultural, and then the proposed commercial kennel. Little to no additional traffic will be created. Um, they will have to have VDH approval prior to construction. The Planning Commission held their public hearing on September 18th. Um, they did recommend approval on an eight-to-o vote. We did have three members of the public that came forward to speak. The following conditions were recommended subject to that approval. The site shall be developed in general conformance with the concept plan submitted. A basic site plan addressing zoning conformance with the required setbacks, parking, and other requirements shall be approved prior to issuance of any county permits. Kennel operations shall be limited to breeding, raising, training, and selling of dogs and/or puppies owned by the property owner. No more than 25 dogs, excluding dogs under the age of six months, shall be housed on the property at any given time. No signs advertising the kennel shall be placed on the property, Quince Road, or Pilot Road. The keeping of the dogs shall comply with all applicable regulations of Montgomery County Code, Chapter 3, that is the animals section of county code. Any lighting provided for the kennel shall comply with dark-skY friendly standards. Following the Planning Commission meeting, the owner has, um, submitted an email to me to address some additional concerns. He asked that I share with you. Um, all the dogs on the property are family dogs. They do work on the existing farm. Um, they do remain there even after retirement. So, he does have a lot of dogs that are not used for breeding. Um, all dogs over six months would be included toward that 25 maximum, so that does include even the dogs that are not being used for the breeding operation. Only registered dogs are used for breeding. Um, generally, they breed twice per year, so typically one to two dogs, um, which is two to four litters in a typical year. Um, they are very cognizant to not breed more than there is demand for. They do have a waiting list for their puppies. Um, if acquired, they may obtain some livestock, working guardian dogs, um, similar to like a Great Pyrenees. Um, it is unlikely that that would produce more than maybe an additional two to four, probably two, um, litters per year. Puppies are introduced to the livestock and vet-checked before going to their home. And then, they do have an adopter screening process on their website, so if you go on there, you have to complete an application that they review. Um, this is just a sample of some of those questions that are on their site. Um, it is also encouraged on their website that if an owner does adopt a dog from them, and for some reason it's not a fit for their family, that they return them back, um, to Mr. Cowan, so he can either find it another home, or he just adds it to his, um, family of dogs that he keeps there on-site. We did notify adjoining property owners. You have received several comments, um, have been submitted, and they should have been included in your packet. We also placed public hearing signs and read legal ads. Um, there may be some people here to speak tonight. Mr. Cowan is here, if you should have any questions for him, and I will take any questions you have for me.
Okay, thank you. Um, Supervisor King, do you have anything you wanna ask at this time?
Yeah. How many dogs is on the property now?
I will have Mr. Cowan answer that when he comes up in just a few minutes. Um, I believe I have heard about 11. It's 11.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Um, Supervisor Kith?
You know, you know, I'm gonna reserve on this one for a sec, cuz I've, I've asked some questions. I'm waiting for a couple of answers on, but.
Okay.
I'll leave it alone.
Alrighty. And Supervisor Boone? Okay. And Supervisor Gravsky?
Uh, my only question right now, you, you mentioned that three, sorry, three community members came to the, uh, Planning Commission meeting. Did they speak for or against the application? Or what was the mix?
One did not really speak for or against. It was sort of a, here's my concerns. Um, two were opposed to the request, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And Supervisor Damotz?
I don't have any questions at this time, thank you.
All right. Vice Chair Fidjikowski?
No questions.
Okay. And I don't have any at this time, so we'll go ahead and open up the public, uh, hearing. And we did have, uh, some folks sign up, and so we'll, uh, call on them first, and then anyone else that might like to speak after that, that didn't sign up, that would like to speak on this public hearing, may do so. So, our first person is Rihanna, Ri- Rihanna Watson, I believe. I hope I did that right. Welcome.
Uh, hi, and thank you for your time. My name is Riannon Watson. I reside at 4901 Pilot Road, um, as pictured on your map. Um, in yellow is, um, the Cohen residence. I am directly to the right, uh, the entirety of that 53 acres, and we share that entire fence line. Um, the unfortunate part of this situation is that, uh, the Coens are lovely people. Um, I've spent many, uh, time, you know, discussing over fences with, uh, her, uh, the wife and the children. Um, she told me they had 13 dogs. Um, and also, it's what listed in the application. Um, my problem is more a moral one. I'm a licensed veterinary technician. I have been working since the age of 16, um, to decrease the animal population in Montgomery County. I personally started and ran three low-cost spay-and-neuter programs, costing shelters thousands, if not millions, of dollars out of their pockets to help people spay and neuter to lower our county population. In Montgomery County, I am proud to say, I've lived here my entire life, born, bred, born in Montgomery County Regional. My child was born in Montgomery County Regional. I lived in Christiansburg until my husband, during his deployment in Afghanistan, we were finally able to raise money to buy our future dream property in agricultural district. I'm concerned as to how little, um, information is discussed as to where this is agricultural land. If you want to commercially breed, sell the products of your dogs, buy commercial property to breed, sell, I don't know of a single commercial breeding facility within Montgomery County limits. I'm not sure anyone has ever been brave enough to try to do so. Um, I myself have started, run on my own free time, blood, sweat, and tears, low-cost spay-and-neuter programs. I'm currently in a private practice again, where last week I sold two Dobermans, sold to a human. She thought dogs couldn't breed through a kennel. Guess what they can? Now sister is pregnant from brother. She's seeking an abortion. That's what we have to see every single day of our lives. We don't get awards. We don't get thank yous. Everyone thinks we're mean, evil. We have to kill the healthy dogs that are sitting in shelters. There's a huge population of blue healers in shelters, euthanized in private practices, because they are not meant to be family dogs. And I understand that the Coens understand this. I need you to know, there's a shelter within Montgomery County with 50 dogs that need homes already. Um, and, and I urge you strongly to consider, I live on a farm. I want to continue to live on a farm. I don't want to listen to barking dogs, and it honestly tears my soul from top to bottom, that I've worked my entire life against this, and now I'm being asked to live beside it. Um, and that's, that's all I have to say. And I thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you. And next up is Matthew Watson.
Good evening. My name's, uh, Dr. Matthew Watson. Live at 4901 Pilot Road in Pilot, Virginia. Thank you for giving us the chance to, uh, be heard in this matter. Um, I stand here in strong opposition of this special use permit to allow the construction of a commercial dog breeding facility slash kennel in Pilot, Virginia. My family and I share a property line with a proposed site, and after learning of its planning, we were all strongly opposed to the following, for the following reasons. Reason number one, mass production of dogs in a county where animal shelters are already full of perfectly good dogs that are in desperate need of homes is not a wise thing to do, nor is it a moral thing to do. A need, uh, a need for the proposed dog breeding facility does not exist in Montgomery County. Uh, we have a surplus of, of dogs at the moment, as it is. Reason number two, commercial dog breeding facilities are businesses, and therefore must operate within a budget and satisfy a bottom line. All commercial dog breeding facilities start off with good intentions. None of them want to turn into puppy mills. However, many fall on hard times and are forced to deal with unexpected expenditures, such as expensive medications, facility cleaning, facility repair, and of course, veterinary care, the most expensive of which is veterinary care. And unfortunately, it is also the first expenditure to be cut when a dog breeding facility falls on hard times or wants to improve their profit margin. This can lead to sick dogs, and when a litter of puppies gets sick, it can delay the sale for weeks, and therefore they may not sell. In turn, the total number of dogs in the facility, uh, that needs to house can grow. A number of dogs can outgrow the facility's ability to house them properly, forcing the facility to keep these dogs together in makeshift housing units where they unfortunately begin to breed. Then, you have even more dogs. This is how you end up with appalling living conditions and neglect. The breeding facility owner's never intended for it to happen. It just gets out of control, and they don't have the time, the space, the help, or the funds to fix it. The risk of animal welfare is too high to allow these facilities to increase the number, especially in our county. And finally, reason number three, the facility plans indicate outdoor kennel spaces for the dogs. If this facility is allowed to be built, this will lead to endless barking and noise, especially at night, when what is usually a two-to-three-dog rural barking match will ultimately end up in being a 25-dog-plus chorus. The residents of Pilot do not want nor need this. The Pilot Community Center does not want nor need this. Our property values do not want nor need this. I strongly urge you to deny this special use permit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And, uh, next up, we have Ms. Audrey Meehan. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Um, this is very hard. I'm overwhelmed by what the Watsons had to say in their.
And Ms. Meehan, you are in Christiansburg, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, just for the record.
I live, uh, on Tanglewood Drive off of South Franklin. Um, I read through the application, and I couldn't understand why the previous board even pushed it up to you as being approved, when it seems quite, um, like the schematic of the building that they planned to build. Um, I don't know if someone can go through and put that up. They show very nicely the house, uh, or the living quarters for their daughter that's gonna be on top of the kennel, but they don't show any structural, um, kennel plans. And I did some research and found that the federal government requires you to have 25 to 30 square feet of floor space per dog, and, um, their schematic shows nothing about the actual kennel building itself that will house the animals. And as an animal lover, we have all seen what has happened in the breeding facilities, like Dr. Watson just pointed out, where they have good intentions to begin with, but then, you know, fall on hard times or have problems, uh, maintaining and with just the, they say they're gonna have employees, but the employees are just the family with, um, no one to go and monitor the upkeep of the facility. Also, I don't think that our county has the resources to send, um, regular monitoring individuals to make sure that the to make sure that the facility is adequate for the dogs being housed. I had several other points I wanted to speak to, but I, but one of the main things is that I don't understand why the schematic drawing of the proposed kennel just had a 30 by 30 square foot, just big square, and, and no proposed facility for the, caring for the animals themselves. And I'm an animal lover. I think that's about it, except I don't know if there was an environmental impact study done, and I know that there's a creek that runs along the property, and I don't think it was addressed how they're going to handle the animal output. I don't know, I don't know how else to put it plainly, how they're going to maintain the cleanliness of the, I'm sorry, I can't think of a good way of putting this, poop. So I don't know if there's been any kind of environmental study where they're planning on disposing of the.
I think we, I think we know what you're trying to say.
Yeah, okay. So I don't, I haven't seen any plan there, I don't know if any of the.
If you notice, the red button went off, so your time is up, and I think, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll take anyone else that wants to speak on this issue, and that would include the applicant. Is there anyone else that wants to come forward for this public hearing? Well, seeing no one, I guess we'll go ahead and close. Do you want to ask the applicant a question, Mr. King? Oh, okay, I didn't see it because the computers like blocking. Do you want to come up?
Do you have any questions?
Do you, did you want to ask him a direct question? Okay, come on up. I'm sorry, I can only see the top of your head. Welcome.
I'm Jason Cowan.
And, you know, I was at the planning commission meeting when you was there, and I just have a few questions. How many dogs do you have now?
We have 11 dogs that are like full-time keepers, definitely, and we have three puppies that were not sold, and we haven't just dumped them off, so we've kept those. And they may or may not be rehomed, they may just become part of our family dogs.
And it was brought up about the fence, and you said you had to put some cattle rails up or do mend the fence?
Yes, yes, there's, we pretty much have everything new. There's one stretch that is, everything is fenced, just like the application says, some of it's pretty bad. But I have the cattle panels there, but we, there was one part that we just put up, like along our driveway, to keep all of our sheep and goats back from our house and the road and stuff. So now, as far as I can tell, maybe only the baby goats that can go through cattle panels get out. But as far as I know, they don't get out anymore, so.
Okay.
Anything else? Anything from the other board members while the applicant is here? Any other questions? All right, thank you. Last call for anyone else to come up, all right? Seeing no one else, we'll move to our next public hearing, and I guess Bree will talk us about, this is a Shaw development request to vacate a public utility easement, I think we've talked about before, but go ahead.
Correct, and we have talked about this property before. So this is a request to vacate a 20-foot public utility easement between two tax parcels, and to also vacate a 20-foot drainage easement and detention pond area. So the Board of Supervisors approved a jurisdictional boundary change with the town of Christiansburg back in 2022. Then the property came to you for a rezoning request, this is right off of Halchins Road, for a planned unit development residential to allow townhomes, single-family, and duplexes. Now they have determined that they need to vacate a couple of easements that were previously on that property, so this was before even the boundary line adjustment was done for the, for the town of Christiansburg, there were some public utility and drainage easements there. You can see these easements here in the hatched area. This used to be a boundary line between two parcels, and that's why that public utility easement is there. Our ordinance does require that when you are creating new lots, you provide public utility easements on all property lines. So this was added in during that, when this was originally plotted many years ago, and now they need to vacate this easement. And then this is also an easement and drainage detention area that they are requesting to be vacated because they are going to have to relocate that based on the development. So we did notify all adjoining property owner, notice, all adjoining property owners, and we did put notice in the paper. We have not received any comments, but I will take anything you have for me.
Okay. Supervisor Kits, did you have any questions about this? I know it's in your district, any questions?
No, I asked my questions, they were answered today, thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else on this side have any questions?
How about over here?
Okay. All right, then, no one signed up, I'll open this public hearing, no one signed up to speak on this issue, but if there's anyone out there that would like to come forward at this time, they may. All right, seeing no one, we'll close this public hearing, and we'll move to our fourth public hearing tonight, and that is an ordinance amending the tax relief program for the elderly and disabled, and I'll look to Ms. Hill and Mr. McMahon for anything they might like to say. And then we'll open it up.
We presented this to you a meeting or two ago about revising the limits for the tax relief for the elderly and disabled, and increasing the income limit to keep up with the COLA adjustments to social security income. And that increase that's included in the public hearing would be to change from $68,000 a year to $70,000 a year, and that it would also increase the property value that could be considered, considered from $200,000 to $205,000.
Okay. We didn't have anyone sign up, or Mr. McMahon, would you like to add then?
Yeah, and then also the annual income went up from.
Oh, okay.
Forty-three to 45,000 for the 100%, and then the 60% went up accordingly as well, 45 to 56, and then 56 to 70 for 40%.
Okay. Any questions from board members or comments? And we didn't have anyone that signed up for this particular public hearing, but if there's anyone out there that would like to speak at this time on this issue, please come forward. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close that public hearing, and we'll move on to our public address section of our meeting. And at this time is a time for citizens to come forward to speak on any issue about local government in Montgomery County, and it's our job to listen, we don't answer questions during this time, but this is your time to speak to us, and you'll have, you come up, you state your name and where you reside, and then the same issue with the little box, when the little yellow light goes off, it's three minutes, and when the red light goes off, it's four minutes, and that means your time is up. And for this particular time, we did have someone sign up, Anna Nu- 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 Nunez?
Nunez.
I probably slaughtered that, but come on up and welcome, and you are from the Small Business Administration Office of Disaster, thank you, Recovery and Resilience, just what we need to hear.
Yes, and is this where the box will buzz me out?
Yeah.
Okay, good, I was going to put my timer. Hello. My name is Anna Nunez, I am with the U.S. Small Business Administration Office of Disaster, Recovery, and Resilience, and I actually also come here as a survivor. I am from Houston, Texas, and I've had trees on my roof in the last few months, and was without power and endured flooding, and I am privy to many numerous tropical storms and hurricanes, so my heart is with you, and I understand firsthand the impacts of the community. So I just wanted to take some very brief time, I'm going to pass along some additional information, I will follow up via email with attachments to be more efficient, my business card is on here, I'll give this to her afterwards. And so I just want to be very, very brief. First of all, we are here to help, and I, the purpose is, for me, is to provide information for your community, your county, to be able to work in partnership, to be able to share this information, to help. Not only the residents and folks don't know that you don't have to have a small business to be able to get a low-interest loan, homeowners, renters, folks who, you know, lost their everything in their home, their vehicles, et cetera. So I'm just going to go very quickly, and then more in-depth information is available, but we are urging folks to go on our website to sba.gov/disaster, or to call. We have local, I am here to specifically work in Virginia. I, I was previously in another state and arrived in Aberdeen, and I was there for a bit, and then I went to Roanoke, I'm in Roanoke, and I'm going to be working the surrounding counties, so I am a public affairs specialist, and I'm responsible for working directly with your county, so it's a privilege to be here. And so I just want to let folks know that there are three types of disaster loans available. There's a bit, a business physical disaster loans that are available to businesses to repair and replace disaster-damaged property owned by the business, including real estate, inventories, supplies, machinery, and equipment. Businesses of any size are eligible, and private nonprofit organizations such as charities, churches, private universities, et cetera, are also available. There is economic injury disaster loans, and there are also home disaster loans to homeowners and renters to repair and replace disaster-damaged real estate and personal property, including automobiles. I see my yellow light, so I just want to just go quickly. The low, there are low-interest fixed rates, no payment and no interest for 12 months, there's no fee to apply, you can deny the loan if you're approved and you decide you don't want to. However, let me go really quickly, there are, oh dear, there are, the deadline to apply is up until December the 2nd, and we are certainly, oh, let me get this over, I'm sorry. I guess I just want to end by, survivors have two years from the date of their loan approval to also request mitigation, so we can help prevent future disaster damage, and help is available.
Can you like leave all that with Ms. Sweeney so that we can?
Yes, and I will also follow, like I said, I'll also follow up via email and do all the other attachments, spread it, spread the word to your community, we are here to help.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward during public address? All right, seeing no one, we'll close public address, and we'll move on to ask if there are any addendums?
No, there are no addendums.
Okay. Items of consent. Do I have a motion to pass items of consent?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion or questions? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Abstain.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstain.
Okay. And now we'll move to new business, and our first item concerns the special use permit that we just had a public hearing on about the short-term tourist rental. Is there a motion to pass that?
So moved.
Okay, and is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay. And our next one is the special use permit for the commercial kennel.
I would like to put a motion in, and we put this off to the next meeting, because some of you have said you'd like to go out and visit the property, and we have been getting a lot, lot of negative comments on it.
Okay. And Mr. McMahon, does he need a sec, does it need a motion and a second? Is there a second to Supervisor King's motion?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion about what we need, or I hear that some people want to actually look at the property? Okay. Anything else? All right.
I just want to throw it out there, I just need to, I need to, because I asked a lot of questions about this today, sent a lot of stuff in, got a lot of information. I also need to look at the USDA requirements of what they do for kennels, and, because this is, if I'm not wrong, the first commercial kennel in Montgomery County. Am I, am I to that size, I think?
Bree is checking.
It is not.
Okay. Thank you, I ask.
That was one of your questions that we're working on getting details back to, but it's not the only one in the kennel.
Ah, thank you, I apologize for jumping ahead.
I hadn't answered your question yet.
Then yes, I very much want to push this off, thank you.
Okay, and so that would mean that the answers to your question will be sent to all of us, so, okay. All right, anything else before we vote? All right, roll call.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Abstain.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstain, this is to continue.
Okay, thank you. All right, so our next item is the Shaw Development Request to Vacate a Public Utility Easement that we just went over. Is there a motion to pass that?
Motion.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Abstain.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstain.
Okay, and our next item is the ordinance to amend the tax relief.
Hold on.
Okay, wait.
Did she skip you?
Aye.
Oh, Mr. Fidzikowski, I did skip you.
Supervisor King got to vote twice.
I apologize.
I was, I was.
Keep waiting.
And I apologize for not catching it, so there you go. Okay, we're all okay. All right, what about the ordinance to amend the tax relief program for the elderly and disabled?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay. Now, the next one is real important, National First Responders Day, October 28th, 2024, and it's a resolution. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Any comments? It's very important, right? All right, so roll call, please.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, and then we have National Community Planning Month, and it's this month, and so there's a resolution for that, and we do appreciate our planning department and our planning commission. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Okay, so one of those is a motion, and one's a second, okay? Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, so that leads us into our reports. All right. Mr. McMahon, do you have a report tonight?
Yeah, I'm going to set the tone and say I do not have a report.
Okay, all right. Ms. Hill, do you have a report tonight?
I do have a report. I wanted to remind everyone that this coming Monday, October 21st, is our legislative dinner, it will be at 6:30 in MP2. 21st, is our legislative dinner. It will be at 6:30 in MP2, and October 21st. I'll remind you of more dates that are coming up in an email.
Ms. Hill, the meeting's going to be held on the school, by, school board side.
Oh, well, it's good that Vicky knows where the meeting is. Thanks. I did want to mention a little bit more about the Hurricane Helene impact and the assistance that was provided by so many people. While our community was not impacted to the level that many were, some people had significant impact, and the impact to those individuals who lost their homes or loved ones cannot be minimized. And I just wanted to thank all the people that worked so hard to help those individuals and to help the people with our boil water notice. People really came together and worked collaboratively, and hard, long hours, and I appreciate them all. VDM came quickly to help us, and then FEMA folks came as well. Michael Geary led a task force meeting twice a day during the water boil notice situation to make sure that all the parties that were involved were on the same page, and that everybody was doing all that they could to get that back online as quickly as we could. Legislators reached out to me, and I reached out to them. They helped us get more assistance for our community, and there's going to be a disaster recovery center in the government center. That will be in the very near future. The exact details of that are not worked out yet, but as the logistics come together, we'll pass that on to the community so that they can know where to get help. And the purpose of that disaster recovery center is to put, provide one place for people to come get different kinds of assistance, so they don't have to figure out which, which area to go to, which office, and that kind of thing. It will include FEMA assistance, which includes individual assistance. They're working with us on public assistance, small business assistance, which was spoken about earlier, and there are various types of these programs, so they'll be housed there together for a period of time. The sheriff's office helped us, our staff helped us, the PIO teams helped us, GIS helped us. We really worked together collaboratively, and Marty, Scott, and Chris helped a whole lot. So I just wanted to appreciate everyone for that. And then the last item that I had for you tonight is that the library renovation project in Blacksburg, the outdoor project, is almost complete, so we'll keep you updated on that. And the Auburn Park is moving ahead. It is not complete quite yet, but it is still making good progress.
They do have lights, though.
Good.
They're not working, but they're up.
One step at a time.
Okay. All right, well, with that being said, I'm going to go to Supervisor King because he has sort of already given us a report. So anything else you want to say about the park?
Yeah, I'm waiting on the mow grass. I do appreciate the county staff, you know, people, people got flooded next to McCoy and down the river. The wife and I rode down through there one Sunday, and I apologize if I get emotional, but, you know, this is in people's livelihoods. This is our homes. And, you know, what made you feel so good, you go down there and people are working together. I mean, they may be, you know, have their own problems, but they're at their neighbors, helping neighbors, and that's what Montgomery County should be about. And I appreciate the sheriff's office and EMS side for their helping this, and the county staff, as I said. And I'll leave it at this. The winter, the nights are getting colder, so please check your smoke detectors, have your flues and chimney checked. That's all.
Okay, thank you. All right, Supervisor Kits?
Um, I'll let Supervisor Grafsky talk about it, but I had a good time down with McCoy Fire and Rescue the other day for pancake breakfast. I could find some great pictures of him actually doing work flipping pancakes and bacon, but it was good. And just a shout out to the McCoy, because McCoy, the Long Shot McCoy Department has a lot of Swift by the rescue. They have the boats, and they were, they were busy, and they, they had a full plate. So shout out to those guys. That's a, that's a pretty good outfit, and I'm proud they're part of our county, and I'll let Supervisor Grafsky talk about the rest, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Bone?
No report.
Okay, and let's go over to Supervisor Demots.
Want to give a, an update on Parks and Rec. Just some, some interesting new information that may not have made it to the board level. We did have a new aquatics program supervisor start in late September, so if you see Kelsey Delft in the building, please welcome them as their, as our new aquatics program supervisor with us. Also wanted to give a little bit of a report on how many football teams and fall ball teams we were able to put together this season. So we have four flag football teams, five tackle football teams, and we have four cheerleading squads to support those athletic departments. And then we have 15 fall ball teams, and that's a combination of baseball, softball, and T-ball. So we have 15 total teams for fall ball. So that's a huge turnout. And then one final statistic of interest for this board, this past summer, we had 27,185 visitors to the Frog Pond. A typical year sees 17,000 to 20,000. This was a very dry summer, so that definitely contributed, but I think, you know, 10,000-ish more than, than what we typically see is a number to note in terms of pool demand. So keep that in the back of your mind as, as the Parks and Rec Commission begins the master plan for the future. Thank you.
Wow. That's really good, good to hear. Supervisor Grafsky?
Yeah, so to continue on what Supervisor Kits started, this past Saturday, the Long Shot McCoy Fire and Rescue had their annual pancake breakfast, and I was happy to both consume and help with the preparation there. They had over 300 members of the community come through the fire department on Saturday and eat breakfast, which, you know, they told me on average it's 200 to 250, so they had a huge turnout. I ate breakfast with a gentleman who just happened to be driving down Price's Fork and saw the big sign on the road and said, well, my Saturday breakfast buddies aren't, aren't around, so I came down for some pancakes. So it was just really fun to, to interact with folks from the community and work with those guys at the back and see them continue to serve the community in so many different ways.
Okay, thank you. All right, Vice Chair Fidzikowski?
Uh, well, I'd like to start off by congratulating and thanking Supervisor King for his 20 years volunteering in the fire department. And some items that I've been involved in, well, the county picnic was held about a week and a half ago on Saturday, and it was a very good turnout. Of course, it had to have been postponed because the Saturday before that, we were all swimming. So also, what else did I want to mention? Man, that's it, I guess. That's it. I'm off the hook.
Um, yeah, the county picnic was really a lot of fun, and the employees were very happy. And I want to just give a shout out to the Employee Engagement Committee. I don't know how they come up with all the things that they come up with, but it really makes it a really sort of cool place to work, because all of them are volunteer-type things. If you want to do it, you can, or if you don't want to do it. And it's just really good to see that kind of engagement. I had a comment about the Frog Pond. I was actually here, you know how my history goes, when that became a reality, and it came from a part-time engineer that suggested it to a very, very conservative board after there was a crack in the swimming pool. And somehow, this gentleman was able to sell this to a very conservative board. And at the time, you know, splash ponds and all that, they weren't a thing here. And to think, Supervisor Demots said 27,000 visits. I mean, that's just remarkable. So that's really cool. One thing Steve forgot to mention that probably you were going to mention is that he and I and Supervisor Kits attended the Farm Bureau meeting, and of course, I went after Congressman Morgan Griffith to see what he was going to do for us, right? So, so anyway, so we got a little bit of advice there. But it was a very well-attended event. It looked like, I mean, I don't even know how many people. They filled up the whole entire community room at Christiansburg Middle School. So I don't even know if they had 200 people. I don't know how many people they had, but it was very well-attended. So if you ever get a chance to, they do it every year, so if you ever get a chance to attend, you find out a lot of information from folks maybe that you don't run into all the time. So shout out again to all the people that helped with the storm. And to Todd's point, there was a church that I know down there that actually their church members were making food to take to the families that lost their homes. They're making dinner for them every night, so pulling together. So if there's nothing else for the cause, we are officially adjourned.